Welcome to the regular planning commission meeting. Grand Blank Township, September 1st. Hard to say September. Twenty twenty-two. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. All right, planning commission members present this evening. We have almost a full house, not quite. Ms. Hugo, Mr. Yoncho, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bush. Mr. Johnson is absent. We have our planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Jeremy Smith, and from Giffords Webster, we have Ms. Jill Bane. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under new business, A, special land use number twenty-two dash zero zero five, asking to be tabled to a future date.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended. Support.
Motion by Mr. Anderson, support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Approval of the minutes, that would be from August.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the draft, the final draft of the minutes for August 4th, 2022, and find everything to be in order, so I make a motion that the minutes be approved as stated.
All right, motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Bush. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Next would be an opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone here from the public, so we'll skip past that and go to correspondence. I didn't see any. Old business, zoning case text amendments. Ms. Bane, are you going to lead us through that?
We will just go old school with paper versions. I was going to cast this on the screen just so we could go through it together pretty easily, but everybody should have the packet material that we sent out last week, where we have five amendments to talk about, a couple of which I believe you've seen and we've discussed. The first one is a change needed for the definition of family care home and group daycare home, and those are related to a recent update to state law that provides for residential care facilities. And some of the information, and you may have seen it, that said family daycare homes could, which we've in the past have allowed up to six children, that they could have seven, and group childcare homes that were allowed twelve could have fourteen. It, when we looked at making the amendment, it wasn't as simple as just changing the definition to say seven and fourteen, because the definitions in the act haven't changed. What did change was a term called increased capacity, which allows a family or group childcare home provider, if they meet certain standards, what, a certain length of time, that they're allowed to have an increased capacity. So instead of playing games or putting a lot of interesting language into the definition, it seems to make sense just to refer to the state act. The definitions are included there, and our recommendation is just to be consistent with that. And you really have to anyway. I mean, I guess in theory, we could not have these definitions at all, because they are required to be permitted, at least the family childcare homes are, up to six, well, or seven, if that may be. But if anybody has any questions on that one?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Banderski?
Yeah, my only concern is, if somebody looks this up in our ordinances, but then they have to go to some other place.
They do.
Where do they find that?
It's listed in here. It's PA 116 of Public Act 1973. They will have to go find that.
That's my only concern, because...
If they're a provider...
How do they go find it? They gotta go to the state?
Yeah. I mean, you can just Google that term, and it would take you right to the act. If they're a provider, they're going to need to know that anyway, because they'll have to be licensed. And if they're a parent, they may be familiar with it, or there are resources that can help them be familiar with that.
One thing to add, too, is that way, we don't have, every time something changes, we don't have to go back and amend the text like we're doing today. We can just say, okay, well, it goes to that, so they're going to update that on the state website automatically, so saves us a step.
All right. Seems pretty straightforward on this one.
Hold on a second. So, make a motion to hold a public hearing on that one, or move that to a public hearing at the next available date?
Do all these at the same?
We can do them all at once if you want.
I think, let's just...
Fine, we're going to go right on through then. The next one is a request to be a little bit more efficient with permitting accessory roadside stands. These are permitted in section 4.8 in the U standards. They are mostly temporary in nature. They are, they tend to be seasonal. You have currently, the planning commission has the authority to review a sketch plan for approval, and then when they are, they're even less temporary, I guess, than seasonal, they are needing to go to the zoning board of appeals. That can cause delays and some additional expense for vendors to do that, and so the request was, could the planning and zoning administrator approve them? And then it just seemed to make sense to have not a distinction between the seasonal and the temporary, that they're largely the same thing. And there are standards, one through 10, that it would be required regardless of who the approving body is. Do you want to, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, this stemmed from some complaints, and we've heard those complaints, and the cost was one of them, so this was my way of being able to push it through, have it through my approval as an admin approval, instead of having to come before all of you or the ZBA. So there was some chatter online that we were trying to abolish roadside stands completely. That's false. We are not trying to abolish them. We're just trying to make sure that everybody's permitted, and the ones that are out there at this time, little to, none of them are permitted, so we just want to make sure that everybody's following the correct protocol. We've had a couple instances where one was causing traffic backups on a major thoroughfare and wasn't permitted, so if they are, if this is given to me, then I can go out there, you know, if they come in and apply for it, I can go out that day or the next day and get this going, so there's not this backlog of, could be a month before the next meeting comes up, and, you know, special land use fee a minimum is $550. So I mean, that's, you know, I don't know what the fee would be, so that's something I need to work out with Superintendent Limada, but other than that, it's going to be definitely a reduced fee from $550.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, just a comment. I don't have any problem with this change. I think it makes, it makes practical sense. I would just suggest that when we do delegate some of these decisions to yourself, the planning and zoning administrator, that you include that, like when you do your committee report at the end of our meetings, those kinds of decisions would be useful for us to know that, you know, you made those decisions.
Got a question in here. Said stand should be, okay, no closer than 50 feet from the right of way if parking is in the front. What if there's no parking in the front?
Parking's going to be required.
Yeah.
So if they put parking in the, nine times out of town, parking's going to be in the front of their...
I agree, but just, somebody, for whatever reason, is there a different distance? I'm just curious about the wording on that.
It's been in the existing language for a long time. I hadn't noticed it. Has it...
That, I mean, this is the first, none of, like I said, this was, came, and none of them were permitted, so not that I'm, I don't know if anybody follows those guidelines at this point, so I don't know if that's something that, if you, are you thinking that 50 is too much, or is...
I think the question is if parking is not provided in the front...
I got people parking behind my garage or whatever, instead, so how close can I go to the right of way?
I see. Maybe it needs, just need to say 50, period.
It could be just 50 feet.
Fifty feet from the right of way, and to just remove the, if parking's in the front? Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question. What constitutes a roadside stand? Do we have a definition? We, I, in my neighborhood, we have, I have two people, one that has a small table out by the road, and it's, and it's free zucchini, yellow squash, okay? The other one, on the other side of me, and this is quite a ways down the road, each of them, has a, has a small bench out there, just a seat, with tomatoes, cucumbers, zucchini, green peppers, and a little sign that says 25 cents each, and they just have a little box out there. So would those people need to have a permit for accessory roadside stand?
Hold on, if you could just bear with me one minute while I download the ordinance again. I thought I had it on my laptop here.
I got my roadside stand. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I think so. And I'll explain to Jeremy when Jeremy gets back. Because I know the one in Grand Blank. The right of way is back, the other day I walked there.
Yeah.
Yellow line.
Right.
We're just having some discussion about, is 50 feet too far if I, you're not parking in front, because you, your right of way line is some distance from the edge of the road.
Typically, where the telephone pole is, is the start of the right of way.
Right, which could be 20 feet back, right? Another 50 feet back from that. And if you've got a, just a little table, not even going to see it.
Right, it's going to be up by your garage.
These are special land uses, too, so I think, doesn't, we don't define it.
What, what comes to my mind, and just as you're looking there, is, and it's in Monday Township, there's a little farm that sells pumpkins every fall. They've got it set up now. They've got a gravel driveway and quite a deep property, and yes, the pumpkins are up closer to the road, little stand, and you pull in the driveway and park behind it. Wouldn't want to make them have to be 50 feet back from the road, and then have the neighbors be 50, you kind of lose a lot of frontage, I guess you could say, if you put the parking behind your place, so it just seems like quite a distance, and smaller property, that could be pretty much the standard, that'd be at your front porch almost.
You know, oftentimes, these roadside stands might be helping the kid get through college or something, you know? That's often the case. On Cook Road there, by the extension, the young lady, the Eaton family, they grow sunflowers.
Yep.
And have sold sunflowers annually, not this year, but, you know, that's, just, it's not, it's kind of enterprise.
I don't think that's what this ordinance is intending. The ordinance says in that section 4.8, that the, says the first one is, the site is located R1, R2, R3, or RE, and is accessory to a permitted agricultural use. So if you have a garden in your backyard and you're growing zucchini, and you put out a table, I don't think that's considered a roadside stand necessarily, unless you've got a lot of zucchini, so...
Well, so maybe we need to change that definition then, too, because what, the ones that are...
Or maybe limit the size of them. Roadside, accessory roadside stands larger than X number of square feet have all these standards that go with them.
But the ones that are under are the ones that are giving us the problems.
How big are they? Is it like the bench with the zucchini, or is it bigger than that?
It's bigger than events, but it's not, you know...
Bigger than 100 square feet?
Hmm, 10 by 10?
I mean, a 10 by 10 would be a standard little pop-up tent that someone might have at their house. Does that seem like it's a problem?
That's, the part, the, it's not the size of the stand, it's the parking and the ingress egress off the property is the problem, causing traffic backups and on major thoroughfares and...
Please, list this as the selling of produce or agricultural product for profit.
Well, and that's, that's the problem, is you have a commercial enterprise on a residential piece, that's where the special land use comes in.
Correct.
So that's, if it was a donation stand, but you still could have the amount of traffic as a paid stand, too, so I guess, I don't want to treat them different, I guess, but...
Two comments. First, a little comment that Larry made, talked about 50 feet from the road. It's 50 feet from the right of way.
Right of way, right. It should be 75 feet from the road.
Yeah, it's a rough, in that number.
Yeah.
And then to Jill, I don't care how small or large, people will call it a roadside stand.
Right.
So I mean, that's just the...
Well, then, then the benches would require them to, if they want to have a bench on the side of the road, they have to submit a sketch plan to the planning and zoning administrator and go through that process. I guess the question would be, is it still going to be a special land use? Because it is in the R...
Here's what I don't want to do, is flood him with phone calls every time somebody wants to put zucchini out at the side of the road for free. That's why this is, this is really tough to define, because that's...
And the person putting the vegetables out there for a quarter, that's, that's a public service. I mean, it's not money-making.
Well, I get that, but it's also, you're still collecting money, and I've had a few phone calls with a few of these individuals that are pretty upset about what was, violation notices went out to everybody that we knew of, so they're pretty upset about what happened. But as soon as you start collecting any money, that's a commercial enterprise. I don't care if it's a quarter or nickel, that's a commercial enterprise on a residential piece of property, so...
You could have, so you could do it at different scales.
So you're telling me my kid can't sell potatoes?
I think the ones that are over, like 100 square feet, should still be a special land use.
Excuse me, excuse me. As secretary, I have a responsibility to say that we need to have one conversation between one or two people. Not all the side conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that size should be a part of the discussion in terms of how it's permitted. So accessory roadside stands are special land uses. I think if we said, if it's over 100 square feet, it needs to come to the planning commission because it's a special land use. If it's under 100 square feet, it can be approved administratively, it's a permitted use, but then they still have to supply all this information. I don't, I would...
Maybe over 200 square feet, or 150 square, you know, 200 square, because I'm trying, the little, the little ones, I don't have an issue approving myself, it's just they have to meet these requirements.
Right.
But...
We can bring this one back after we work on it a little more.
Can we add in there that it, that it cannot obstruct traffic, and then it must have adequate parking for the expected use?
Number seven says that. Mm-hmm.
Can we modify number six, too? I agree, 50 foot is a tad egregious. 10, 20 feet? It's a public safety thing, in case somebody's, you know, you need to be far enough off the road in case somebody, so it doesn't get sideswiped.
Somebody on their cell phone doesn't swerve into the shoulder, I think 20 feet's probably sufficient in my mind. I don't know if there's a consensus on that.
Mr. Bush?
I was just going to say, I think maybe we should put this one to rest for now, just my thought. I'm not, it's starting to sound like we're grumpy old men and don't want nothing to Gram Blake. That's the sound of it.
I don't, I don't hear that at all.
Not, not that at all.
No, I don't hear that.
You're not going to get people, you can't block traffic, okay? Some guy's going to park in the road, regardless of what this says, because people do what they want to do.
I presume this is just, if there is an issue, you've got some backup in urges.
We've got some teeth to where we can send them a violation notice and say, hey, don't do this again. We're not trying to abolish these stands. I'm not trying to get rid of them. We're just trying to make sure that there's, you still have to have the health and safety and welfare of the community in...
But you're going to go get a piece of fruit for, how long's it going to take you? 20 seconds out of your car to go get it and go back?
You would think.
I mean...
But you still have, what if 50 people pull into that spot at the same time? I'm just saying, that's, we got, we have to think...
It's not like a bird's...
I guess the other question I have is, because these are specifically related to agricultural uses and associated with farms, are we also dealing with backyard gardens?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to, we should add that in.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll work a little bit more on this one. Now that we have a complete picture.
How does this compare with rummage sales, where people pull off on the shoulder of the road and are there for a few minutes or maybe a half hour?
They're required to come get a rummage sale permit, too.
And I, those typically are only a couple of days, and you can only have so many of those in a year. That's different, I would think. I mean, even if you're selling zucchini, you're probably going to be out, you might have it out there for a couple of weeks.
Going back to Jeremy, if they get a permit, are they permitted to park on the shoulder for a rummage sale?
Wherever they're allowed to park in a normal course of business, yes. Or normal residential street, so you can park on the shoulder in a residential street, yes.
Let me use McCandless Road as an example.
It has a shoulder, so yes, you could park on the shoulder, yes.
Okay. That seems to be somewhat contradictory to...
That, that one is a little, I understand where you're coming from, where you're trying to compare the two, but it is a little different, but also very similar.
We'll work on that one a little bit now that we have, we've heard some more of it.
But I think the difference with that one is, is it's not, it's not a special land use, if I, correct me if I'm wrong. Garage sale?
Garage sale? No.
Yeah.
It's not.
This is...
And garage sales, I don't think are even in the zoning ordinance.
Is it one of the general ordinances?
I think it's a general ordinance.
So there's, there's your difference.
Thank you. Is this something that, every year that they want to do zucchinis, they would have to come back every year to do it?
No, one of my, that was my next suggestion, was this to be a one and done permitting.
Great.
For the owner, so if the ownership changes, the next owner would have to come in and do it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so you're going to do a little work on this for the distance for parking?
Yep, we'll change that.
You'd think this would be so easy, but I could see this one's not.
No, and it's, and I, in Supervisor Bennett, myself, and Superintendent Limada, we've, we've been discussing this a little bit since these problems arise, so we're, we've suspended, they've all, everybody that was doing these out of permit was given a violation notice, but they've been, I'm going to, I haven't told everybody yet, I didn't know how this was going to go tonight, and they're probably going to be allowed to continue as business today until we get a corrected ordinance, and then next year, you know, January 1st, we'll address everybody then.
Okay.
All right, moving on to...
Can I just make one quick note?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm absolutely, I think we're in, you taking over, instead of having to pay 500 bucks to come in and you do it, and I'm definitely in favor of that as well.
Excellent. Yeah, just as an aside, I have, there's, in my neighborhood, and I'm, I think it's the cutest little thing, it's this little stand, and it's in this lady's front yard, and she's got like little flowers, and she's got some jam, and she's got cookies out there, and a little cute sign, and it's adorable, and I took a picture of it, but I don't want to post it, because I'm afraid she's going to get in trouble with my... I stopped and I bought flowers from her this morning, but...
Another thing, too, is I've heard some of these stands are selling eggs.
What's wrong with eggs?
If you have chickens on your property, that's a problem.
Oh.
So we're, are we saying that there's no chickens allowed?
You have to have 10 acres to have farm, have livestock.
So just today, before this meeting, I was reading an article in the Davison Index, and there's a group in Davison that's pairing up with a group statewide to try and get townships and cities to change this ordinance.
Pass it along?
Yeah. You got it? Oh, you brought it with them.
I had, it's funny you say that, because I had a phone call today, from my group that's here in Grand Blank, that are looking to push things through, so we'll, we'll see where that goes.
Gosh, first it was marijuana, now chickens.
Right, so, and in the ordinance...
There's a lot of chicken coop next to my house.
One of those, another suggestion that we haven't, that we haven't gotten to yet is the, there's, you've got to have 10 acres of livestock. Maybe that's a little egregious, and maybe five is...
We talked about this several years ago.
Yeah.
But it's probably a good time to revisit it. It's been, it's been at least five years.
You might see that one at the next meeting. The next discussion meeting is changing the farmland to maybe five, but here's the thing, is you have to be conscious of, you know, Gram Blake Township is a very residential community, a lot of subdivisions. A lot of people don't want to live on a farm, they moved to Grand Blank to live in residential, not on a farm, so...
Rural, but not on a farm.
Correct. So, but we have a lot of subdivisions here.
Oh, no, I know.
That's something to consider, too, so just throwing that out there.
We'll get into a whole, you know, situation. All right. Moving on to the off-street parking space design standards. So a few months ago, changed, we changed the requirements for 90-degree parking from 9 by 18 to 10 by 20, without changing the rest of the different tiers. So instead of how we have it now, like 30 to 53 degrees, it's not really very common, it's usually 45, 60, 90, so I'm suggesting that we just change them all to that standard language, and then make them all 10 by 20. To do that, we'd have to increase the maneuvering lane width, I think, to 20 feet for both 45 and 60, and then 26 feet for 90 degrees, so that's up three feet for the 45 to 60, and up two feet at the 90, just for the maneuvering lanes to accommodate that. I have a graphic, which I was planning on showing you, but we can do that next time. It's a pretty straightforward change. I would suggest that we might think about, since, since now we are increasing the size of parking lots, which most communities are not doing these days, we're trying to figure out ways to reduce the size of parking lots, but understanding space needs, and we have a lot of large vehicles here, that maybe at some point, we want to think about lowering our, some of our parking standards. So maybe our parking spaces are bigger, but we don't need as many spaces, so the net effect might be that we're maybe not increasing the size of our parking lots. So not on the table for discussion, but I just wanted to throw it out there as something to think about.
That's going to be a lot of deciphering, because there's four pages of, each business has, depending on square footage or tables or...
But there's standards for that, that...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we have standards.
Items that we're talking about today, that we're talking about having a public hearing at some point here, right?
Yes.
At the October meeting. Outside of probably this roadside stand one so far.
Right.
I would say, I think this one, to me, seems like pretty straightforward, that we should be able to schedule it for a hearing.
Each parking spot must accommodate an Escalade, period.
Well, the doors, yeah. Okay.
All right, the next one is about signs, and these would be monument signs and wall signs for industrially zoned districts. The idea is increasing the amount of wall and monument signs for those industrial zone properties that are close to the interstate, which does help the, the users themselves, whether they're tenants or owners of land, but it also could be signs for people as they're traveling up I-75, to see new business, new industrial, new manufacturing businesses here in Gram Blake Township, so it probably has a twofold purpose to it. So currently, we allow, for monument signs, in those commercial and industrial districts that are within 300 feet of I-75, to have a maximum height of eight feet and 100 square feet in area, so we're suggesting that for industrial zone properties, we increase it from 100 to 150, and from eight to 10 feet in height.
That's, any that are within the 300 feet?
Within the 300 feet, right.
I think we just need to spell that out again to make sure it's...
Okay.
My thought on that, and I'll run this by, I'd be okay with going with 50 feet or so. We have a drive through Auburn Hills, you drive through Auburn Hills, you know exactly where you're at, know exactly what businesses are wearing, who does what. It's clear, and all of those businesses benefit from the six lanes of traffic going by them every single day. I think it's part of the desire for businesses to build in that area. I'd like to make sure that we can encourage that growth here, so is 50 feet enough? For express... For expressway now, these signs aren't on the street side, they're on the freeway side only. That's what I'm referring to.
Wanna make the signs square footage?
Okay.
I think those signs are terribly just.
Square, I'm sorry, square footage bigger, is that what you're saying? You wanna see more square footage?
I don't know if I would notice. What's the proposed change from what?
From eight to ten feet.
Eight to ten feet. I don't know if I would notice that so much.
You might not.
At seven miles an hour from my car.
You might not. If you can think of, Security First is one of the, one of the ones that I just know off the top of my head. Has a, I think theirs is eight feet. And that's right there on the berm as you're coming up I-75.
Coming up, it's at the south end of the township.
If you have a wall sign, that can be up higher, right?
If you have a wall sign, they would be up higher, and then we're proposing to enlarge those up to one hundred square feet. From sixty-four, I think that is.
A lot of our properties along the freeway are undulating. And if you're gonna measure from the, the ground of a particular property, that sign may not be visible then at ten feet from the freeway.
Well, they can have a ground sign or a wall sign.
They can actually have both.
They could have both.
So they could be within their complex, they could have the. I guess what we're trying to accomplish, I guess, you know, we don't want pole, we, we got away from pole signs, and we're not trying to go back is, is part of why we're, we wanna kinda limit the height.
Yeah.
To a point. And it's from grade, so if they decide to put a mound.
Well, they can't do that. Yeah, no, they can't do that.
Yeah, that's true, I guess, okay. Never mind, scratch that.
I'm, I'm gonna, basically, I'm gonna kind of reconsider that a little bit, and it should be a monument-type sign. What are the dimensions? And I ask this because I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals when this came through. A former GM-SPO building has three of them. And they came to us when they revamped that facility with the request, was maybe actually increasing the size of one, because they felt it was insufficient, and we granted them that. What is the size of, you probably don't know right offhand with those.
Oh, those off the top of my head, no. I can tell you, I can tell you what we allow now.
Right.
But I don't, off the top of my head, no.
Yes, leave it as is for now.
Mr. Bandersky?
Are you having any complaints today from people?
Yes.
Okay. And you think that this change will satisfy them?
Yes.
Okay.
You're always gonna.
Always gonna want more.
They're always gonna want more, but they're always gonna have the option to go for variance, even if we, if they show just cause. You know, like you, like Mr. Yansho said, if they're undulating and it's not visible from the, they can show hardship or practical difficulty, then they would be granted a, a variance, but.
I was just gonna say, I'm gonna piggyback on what Larry said down in Auburn Hills. There's some beautiful industrial buildings that sit way back off the road. And those signs are way bigger than a hundred and fifty.
That would be a reason to get a variance in, I would think, right?
If you had a.
Couldn't see them in a hundred and fifty square feet.
That's what I'm saying. We're talking about ones that are long seventy-five. If, if they're way back, then they come in and say, hey, I can't see this, I wanna make it bigger.
Or if the development wants to come in for a variance to have a, one for the whole.
Signs are really hard to show hardship for. Like, except for, in the case of the, you know, topography, or weird-shaped lot, or, I don't know, somebody put a building extension, now it blocks your sign, and now you need something taller. Maybe those would be kinds, the kinds of things that, just because you're far away, well, you picked that building, you picked that space, why do you need visibility?
You're still allowed to put the signer logo on the building itself.
And another thing, too, kinda, you know, everybody's got GPS in their pocket anymore. I mean, if you don't know where something is, then you plug it into Google and you can find it in thirty seconds, so I mean.
Right, so it's, it's more about the, I think, the economic development aspect of it, the visibility, the promotion of, of those new businesses. For that, this seems like it's probably adequate. I mean, you could let this go for a little bit and see if you're getting more people clamoring. I mean, like you said, they're always gonna.
So there was.
Bigger signs, but.
The, the one complaint that I do have, this fixes their problem.
I'll do some McLaren sign. On the new McLaren building.
See if I can even find.
That's huge. I don't know how big it is, but that's a big, big.
Well.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it's too big.
With hospitals, I don't wanna say they're treated different, but for visibility-wise, I think that was probably the reason why that one was granted to be so big. If you look at.
I mean, I don't think it looks bad.
Genesis Two.
At a hospital.
Headquarters.
It's administrative.
Oh, the headquarters, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I remember when they.
No?
I kinda remember when that one went through now, too.
That was before my, so I, I honestly don't know. But it was granted, right? Obviously.
Well, obviously, it's a huge sign, and it's not, it's not ugly.
Well, that's the part we can't regulate. Ugliness fact.
As big as it is.
Yeah.
It's not out of place.
Right.
Maybe this, I, I kind of agree with moving forward with the way you've got it. But not putting it off the table entirely to look at down the road. And I'll, I'll tell you why, 'cause as, if I were to build a million-dollar business in Grand Blank Township, even though everybody's got GPS and can find it on their phone, I still want that furniture, I want that advertised, I want visibility, period. And it's, I wonder if we could almost tie it to, again, resolving it later on the road, to the square footage or the furniture of the building, the sign can. You know, maybe a bigger building can have a bigger sign. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment. The problem I have is, I mean, the signs are distracting, you know? And the bigger they are, you know, the more distracting they're going to be. And the other thing is that if we, you know, increase the height now, a couple of years down the line, someone's gonna come in and want it, you know, higher. And we're not, we're gonna have to draw the line somewhere, and I don't see any reason why we need to, you know, authorize an increase. And I'd be in favor of keeping the, the current limit on the, the height and the square footage, actually. I mean, inevitably, they're, you know, they're gonna come in, somebody's gonna come in and try to increase the size, and then two years later, someone's gonna propose a bigger one, and they're just distracting, it's, you know.
So the McLaren sign, this was 2017, I have our review letter, so I don't have what was approved by the ZBA, but they were asking for three hundred and twenty-six point six square feet. And, yes.
But it doesn't look out of proportion.
It doesn't, it looks fine.
It was a two hundred and sixty-two point six square foot variance request.
I think Mr. Bandersky was.
Well, I wanted to support what Dolores said, and going back to what Jeremy said, when I asked him, you have any complaints? Yes, would this fix that complaint? Yes. And if people wanted it larger, they could go for a, go to the board to get an exemption. And then in the future, if more industry comes in, we may look at, you know, making it bigger. But right now, I think making it bigger satisfies, or is responding to complaints, and we should stop there and not go overboard. And one place that I drive by frequently on Holly Road there by the Holiday Inn, they have the entranceway in two brick portions, and they have this placard about this big, you know, for the companies in there. You can't read it. If you drive by it, you can't read it. So, you know, that's a place there, they should have larger signs. I don't know if that was conforming to an ordinance or not, but, you know, there's, there's a happy medium. So, making it better because of complaints, I think, helps satisfy that, but not too big.
I agree, we don't wanna open, just open up the floodgates and let it go, but I'm okay with this, this incremental increase.
One thing that we might wanna look at, too, is if it's a single parcel with multiple tenants, maybe giving them a little more leeway, so you can actually read those type of signs. But if it's one parcel, one business, do you really need a monster sign?
Well, if it's, if they get the sign size that they get, and they can always put whatever they want on it.
True.
It doesn't mean that they have to just put one.
Mr. Hoffman, I just get past.
Thanks. Mentioning, yeah, sometimes signs can be too distracting because of the size, it could also be, they could also be too small, where I have to, I'm, I'm causing a wreck because I'm slowing down so much to, to read something. I, I remember long ago, when I was on the Planning Commission the first time, we, we did the sign. And I thought a lot of these were determined upon taking in the factor of the speed of the road, how far the building's off, how big the building is. There's more of a calculation that was done, as opposed to, every building can, can have a hundred feet, or everyone can have a hundred and fifty feet, of that nature. So I think that would tie into the idea of, if we just do a blanket, everybody can have a hundred and fifty, well, that could be too big in some circumstances, or it could be too small in some circumstances. I don't know if you wanna get back to a calculation.
This is a long seventy-five, though, right?
Right.
That's what this one's specific.
Just, yeah, just.
And, and you would, I, I would think that we could justify a hundred and fifty, maybe even justify more, if we put it into that calculation. Hey, people are driving by there at seventy miles an hour, it's this far off and this. I mean, a hundred and fifty might not be big enough, in my opinion.
It's, it's not like a calculator where you just drop it in and it chugs out the numbers for us. I mean, there, there is some science to it.
I, I distinctly remember.
No, there is. There is, there is some, there is the speed of the roadway, the amount of time it takes you to see, then you have a certain number of seconds that you are, are viewing the sign, and then what are the sizes of the, it's primarily related to the size of the letters, not the overall area of the sign, because it could be GBT, but those letters, how tall do they have to be that we can see them?
Right.
How many characters are on?
Right.
That you can read it. I mean, we can take another stab at it.
I think it would just be a better reason to change what's going on, as opposed to, hey, somebody wants something bigger. It's 'cause the next time somebody wants something bigger, it's like, hey, we've done the calculations. Is this be this deal? Now, if it's fifty miles an hour now, and we change it to seventy, then we, you could have a bigger sign, maybe. I just have reasons and data of why we changed it to it, as opposed to just making it bigger.
Mr. Hoffman, I'm remembering the discussion we had, too. I think there was a particular advocacy group, I think, that was presenting.
US Sign Council.
Their calculations.
Yeah.
I don't remember what happened with that, but.
Yeah, it's the US Sign Council, they do that, they update it probably every ten years, is my guess. But, I mean, we can definitely do that.
I guess, do we need to address it now, or does this take care of Jeremy?
If, well, we could do two things. We could. You can do, you can move ahead, three things. You could go ahead with this as the way it is. You could go ahead with it, set the public hearing, and we can provide the data. And then we can have additional discussion at, or with the public hearing. Or we can postpone setting a public hearing and do the research, and then set the public hearing.
And I definitely, I'm sorry, I definitely don't wanna belabor it, but you bring up a great point of, it's not just the size of the signs and the height of the signs, it's the lettering. Because you, you have a massive sign up there, but then the letters are only one foot high, they're never gonna see it. So they're gonna have the, the combination of way too big a sign, but way too small of words. So, yeah, both people that are, are having trouble being distracted by that sign.
Right.
You know, the difference in contrast with the background versus the letter color, too, makes it.
Right.
They're gonna wanna be visible.
Right.
I guess my suggestion is that we go with this proposal for the public hearing, have some discussion, get some input, and.
Yep.
Take action then.
I like that.
All right, next.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bandersky.
When you say with this proposal, that's as written, not what Jay was just suggesting.
No, I'm saying as written.
Okay.
Just move ahead with this.
Just for clarity.
Thank you. Other than, I think we talked about maybe making, just making some clarity that the increase is within the three hundred feet of I-75. Just to make sure that's very clear. And this is industrial properties, right?
It just says non-residential.
Correct.
So it could be, there's more than an industrial.
It could be restaurants, retail.
R and D.
Oh, non-residential, okay, I read, I read a different.
Red Lobster deserves a sign on the expressway, too.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Good.
All right. So in the next one, I think we talked about this a while ago, the determination of need for a traffic study. So I think the original question was whether the Planning and Zoning Administrator could make a determination of whether a parking study was required or not. Which I think that the Planning Commission was supportive of. But then, was they read the ordinance language, it called for the Planning Director. So we don't have a Planning Director, we have a Planning and Zoning Administrator. And so, including both of those, so that we don't have to change the ordinance every time we change titles. So Planning Director, or Planning and Zoning Administrator, or their designee. Alternatively, I was gonna suggest the Township Superintendent, but we know that also has changed over time.
Will it be one or the other? It'll be Director?
It should be a person, though.
Right.
The Planning Department isn't, doesn't have authority to.
What? Well, that, that was my original thing, was could do it, one, the Township Superintendent, or their designee. And that way, whoever is in charge of the Planning Department can make that determination. So that's another alternative. I didn't wanna go and change, but then that made me think, well, there's probably other things that say Planning Director. I don't know that we wanna change all of them. This is one of those, like, you pull a little tiny thread out and the health thing starts to unravel.
And, and all, like, I was telling a couple of the gentlemen that we had our Site Planner Review Committee, that my title may change to Director in the next year.
Right.
So it may.
It might not be.
It may not be Administrator forever, so.
Mr. Bandersky?
Yeah, and I had, I was one of those guys that talked to Jeremy. But the word "there" suggests two people. Should that change to his or her?
No.
Designate?
I think more ordinance language is recognizing that that might, that we can be gender-neutral and say, and use the term there. I know that it's not grammatically accurate, but it is reflective of today's language. And we are, that is something that we're doing in other places.
And we're gonna put that in seven or eight paragraphs here, right?
Yes, I think we should simplify that.
Can't, can't you just say Planning and Zoning Designee? It would be whoever.
Well, it would, if we knew who does, who was, who was just designating.
Planning and zoning is designee.
Who designates that person?
The Planning and Zoning. And right now, the designee is the.
Jeremy.
Yeah.
What I'm thinking of in the future, we're gonna grow, and Jeremy might have somebody underneath him, some kind of.
Yes.
You're gonna be the Director, and there's gonna be a, somebody, oh, your assistant, that you might.
That's fine. You're on record right now being the.
He's still in charge, though.
You, you, you're, you're in charge, and as soon as you don't wanna be the designee, you come and ask us to change the designee. I mean, it's the same thing of, why, I just, I kinda agree of, why do we have, oh, if it's, if, if we call that person a Director, if we call that person an Administrator, if we call that person this, we've listed, we could, we could say something other than this.
Township Superintendent, or their designee, 'cause that might be, it might be me, they say. We want the plant, the traffic consultant to make that determination.
Planning and zoning designee, it's whoever they.
So it, it could just be the Township Superintendent, who may designate Jeremy as that person.
'Cause the Superintendent's in charge of the day-to-day and the personnel, not the board at this point, so.
Right, and that's, it's, it's, that's what it's referencing, is the person that would be authorized to make the determination.
You don't want Superintendent looking at every single site plan, do you?
No, no, and he's not, he or she may not do that, but they will look at.
It doesn't say the Superintendent or the designee.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
It's just designee. Or?
Or their designee.
Yeah.
It's.
I'm good with the way it's written, it's my opinion.
I did not anticipate this controversy.
It's just extra words.
Not too long ago.
You did.
Not too long ago, we went for a period of time without a Planning and Zoning official. Well, it was rolled into one, Mark Lloyd was a, I forget his official title. He was, well, and then before that, there was no, it was Joe, there was nobody.
Edwards.
We could, instead, uh, do we define Planning Director? 'Cause we could change it there in the definition section, and then not have to worry about it here.
Could the Plonians, and, uh, the Planning and Zoning Designee, could it not be the President? I mean, it, it could be whoever we want it to be, couldn't it?
But I think the Township officials should be setting it, not the Planning Commission. He's in charge of personnel.
And that's.
So, we have a definition for Planner. So maybe we make that, we just say it there, and then the only change we would make to that section is the one where it said, instead of the Planning Commission, that it's the Planner.
Well, the Planning Director, doesn't that kinda say the same thing?
Just looking at official definitions.
Yeah, just leave it the way it is, it's fine. Trying to clean it up, but it's not being cleaned up, so.
Well, I got it.
Mr. Bandersky?
I'd get to come back and, you know, I support trying to clean it up because we're talking technicality by planning mission people.
Where's this?
The general public is going to read that and say there's two people because they're designate, or they're designate. I mean, it's, it just.
So, in the, in the word "there" here is because either it's the township planning director or the planning zone administrator or their designee. So you need to word, to say "there" if one of these people's.
Those two people are one and the same.
Today, but they might not be tomorrow.
Well, let's write it for today.
Exactly.
I like having the.
We'll fi, well, yeah, we'll figure it out.
So if Jeremy's job title changes, we don't have to go back and change the ordinance?
No, I think I'm going to change the definition instead of this section. And then in the definitions at the beginning in section 2.2, we'll put everything there. And then, when we have this language cleaned up, if anybody's confused about who that person is that we put in that, whatever title we put there, they'll go to the definitions, they'll figure out it's the person designated by the township superintendent to be in charge of the planning department. That's basically what we're, I.
That sounds.
Loosely, that's what we'll say.
See, I like that a whole lot better because you, you took the word "or" out.
Yes, it simplifies it.
Sounds good. Mr. Bandersky, do you have another?
Shut up.
Hey, we're done, no. Wait.
So we're going to schedule.
For that.
We're going to schedule four of these for public hearings.
Oh, wait, that was it? We have time for, we can discuss that more now. I thought there was more to discuss.
Well, that line carries and all of them.
Committee reports.
So this will be scheduled for public hearing in October? Are those people having side comments over there?
No.
One conversation here, please.
They still don't hear you.
They're ignoring you.
Dan, you want to ask your question again of Jeremy? Dan, you want to ask your question again of Jeremy?
Oh, hey there.
We're going to have to amend the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Give him a minute.
All in favor?
Add new committee reports.
We've done this, yeah, that's true.
Don't have to.
There isn't any.
Yeah, there is. It'll be quick.
Okay, no more discuss.
All that. So we're going to have four of these on for public hearing in October. Correct? Okay.
Yes, we have. We have the definitions, which will have two definitions. Parking, the sign, we'll bring back some more language on that and the traffic study. We can do that one too. The only one we're not coming back with is roadside stands because we're going to, that needs a lot more work than we realized now that we know all the issues. The one that we were talking about that we haven't talked about, we probably should just acknowledge it at least, was the, the appearance standards and the attached single-family dwellings. That was the one where we had, the current language is that 50% shared wall between units in an attached single-family structure and whether that might be reduced, which, we can still talk about that. We had brought up the other issue of non-attached or multifamily because there are no standards for that. And then the slides, and I think Jeremy sent that out after our meeting last time. I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at it. That had all the pictures.
My township emails.
Oh. All right, well then.
Just put it in a, in the next memo and we'll just, so they.
Yeah.
Just send it digitally.
Oh, we'll put it in a packet.
Put it in the packet if you could.
All right, so what I, what, then your homework will be, when you get that packet, to look at the examples that we included. Some of them are attached, some of them are apartment buildings. They're kind of different ages and they're sort of, there are not that many of them, they're kind of scattered about. But my primary question was, we had a lot of conversation about the attached townhomes, but there's some apartment buildings that I think are not as attractive as maybe are some of our attached and whether we might want to add some standards for that.
To that discussion, Jill, is there, is it appropriate to get some photographs of different distances? You know, that if, for the public hearing could flash up on the screen?
The signs?
Yeah, well, I know the signs, I'm talking more the housing.
Oh.
Offsets.
You'll, when you see the packet, I don't know, did you see those slides? You, they were sent, Jeremy sent them after the last meeting. I couldn't show them on the screen last time and I couldn't, I can't show them tonight. I'll show them to you after the meeting, actually.
Okay.
Tiny screen.
But I'm just wondering if that would be helpful for the audience.
If we put them in the packet.
We're not talking about it next time.
I don't remember getting them.
We're not talking about this the next time.
Okay.
But when we do, it would be helpful.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
We ready to move on for committee reports?
We have a, a planning report. I would just say that Michigan Association of Planning Conference is in October at Mackin Island. I'm doing a session on Wednesday and the rest of my staff is doing a presentation on Thursday. And we're having a Giffords Webster party at the Pink Pony on Thursday night, 6 to 8. So if anyone's going to be up there, please join us. I mean, I'll see you before then.
Maria and myself will be there.
Oh, good. Yeah, our next meeting is the week before, excellent.
Yes.
All right.
Maria and myself will be there.
Good, is anyone else going?
Unfortunately, I could not, with my budget this year, I could not afford to bring any more planning commissioners.
I'm sorry that I mentioned it.
So I wasn't supposed to tell anybody that conversation we had?
Next. I know.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing from township board, planning, or ZBA?
We did not have an August ZBA. We will have two cases on the September, though, end of September.
Site plan review, we have seen a little bit unusual storage facility that's going to be developed as a, as condominiums where you purchase your unit, you have bylaws and these are larger than what you would normally see. What are we talking, 10 to 15,000 square feet somewhere?
Yeah, roughly.
50 by.
Are they climate controlled?
Yes.
Are they going to be used for man caves?
Yeah.
A little bit.
You're not allowed to.
I required them to, if they were going to have a business.
Overnight.
Can't see overnight.
Yep.
They will have toilet facilities, but no showers.
Where, where is this located?
Holly Road between, what is it, Grand Blank and Baldwin?
Oh, Vince is buying one.
Oh, it's just south of, uh, between township line and Baldwin Road.
What's the shared driveway, what's the business that they share the driveway with?
They named it and I can't remember.
I don't remember either. It's the existing driveway and they're going to share the driveway.
You've got residential zoning on one side, so they'll be putting in landscaping on that side.
Extensive landscaping.
Heavily wooded back.
Industrial and, as you mentioned, heavily wooded. A little bit different concept. Is that Samaa tile? Samaa stone and tile?
It's just before the old Velcro.
Because otherwise I was going to.
On that side of the road.
Isn't that facility on Emberry Road similar to that? Across from the ordinary type storage development?
There is a building there, yeah.
With, with the big.
It's similar, I think.
On the east side of the road.
RVs in there before.
Yeah, limo companies and.
This will have very little parking because you're supposed to pull inside. I think we've got like six parking spaces or something.
Yep. Only because the ordinance requires it. Otherwise, they would, they didn't want any.
They, they basically said man caves, storage for RVs, small businesses that might have things they need stored, stuff like that.
That's all we've seen.
Mr. Chairman, before I make a recommendation, I'd like to make a couple of comments. This comes back to my role as secretary. I made one earlier about no side conversations. The second one I would suggest, and I think it's standard operating procedure, to if you want to talk, you get recognition from the chairman. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that is what we're supposed to be doing.
And so, going forward, I would ask that we conform to these two requirements. And in that respect, I would like a roll call of the commissioners saying yea or nay. Because if I don't have your commitment, I know that that will continue. If I have your commitment, I will feel very comfortable in calling you on it. And all I'm trying to do is bring more professionalism to this meeting. I mean, there's no audience, so today it doesn't mean much, but it's recorded. People can look at that and especially if you have people in the audience and we're having side conversations, they're going to look to that and, and have a negative feeling about their great planning commissioners. Okay?
I, I appreciate the comment and I encourage the planning commissioners to file that. I don't know that we need a roll call, in my opinion, anyway. But did you have something you wanted to say, Mr.?
Sometimes it's hard to get your attention at this end of the table.
Yeah, my neck, my neck only bends this way.
You're focused, you know, with, with Jeremy and Jill.
I appreciate that.
And, I mean, that's, I'm not, not slighting you at all, but, you know, sometimes we have, organizations will have a button that you can push that'll turn a light on.
I've got a button here, but this is just.
Don't push that one, please. Last one with the police department here, real quick, please don't push that button.
We've done meetings where, one community in particular that does that and the chair knows when the lights light up that somebody wants to speak. So that might be something to look into, especially with your arrangement.
All I'm trying to do is bring a little more discipline. And if, you know, I will continue and Mike in the future, if he becomes secretary, to call you out on that. And I, so I would ask you not to be, you know, don't hate me, just know that I'm trying to do my job, okay?
One more comment to that, Vince, I agree. I think not only to get us in check, I think we need to pay more attention to keep the audience in check too. Oftentimes, we let them banter on longer than three minutes. Sometimes they get unruly, a little loud and that comes along with stopping that along with stopping this too. So it's, it's kind of a hole.
Point taken, yep.
With that, I would make a motion that we adjourn at 8:05 PM.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky, support by.
Support.
Andrew.
Oh, Hugo.
Bicho.
Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 8-0, thank you. So, have a good holiday weekend, everyone.
And to you.